I called a order this meeting with the Sherburne School Committee. Today is Tuesday, November 12th, 2024, and we are meeting in the Dover Sherburne Middle School Library. The time is now 6:31. First on the agenda are community comments. We've provided a virtual link for those who wish to make a comment, but for whom it is not possible or prefer to attend in person. Are there any community comments? Okay, anyone on Zoom? Okay. Please remember that community comments are an opportunity for members of the school committee to listen to members of the community. As chair of this meeting, it is my responsibility to facilitate this communication between the public and the committee present this evening. I personally believe this communication is a critical element to assist members of this committee with discharging the responsibilities of the positions they have been elected to hold. To effectively facilitate this discussion, I encourage anyone providing comments to consider that the volunteers that comprise this committee are your neighbors, friends, and fellow community members. We welcome all points of view, but I would respectfully ask that you treat these committee members in a manner consistent with that in mind. Collectively, we are here to support the administration, who in turn assist our educators and support staff to educate, care for, invest in, and inspire our children. Community comments are not a forum for answering questions or engaging in a debate. We respectfully request that you please make your comments brief, no more than three minutes, and that you move the discussion forward by adding new information. Please try to avoid repeating points that have already been made. Once the public comment section of the meeting has concluded, we will move on to other business. Oops. And unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted. This is standard operating procedure in school committee meetings across our three school districts. If you desire more information or have specific questions, contact information for committee members is on the district website. Okay.
Doug.
Hi. My three minutes is starting. I'm Doug Kingsley. I live at 138 Farm Road in Sherburne, 19-year town resident. This is my first school committee meeting. I'm delighted to meet all of you, my neighbors, friends, and community members, as you said. It's my first school committee, but it's not going to be my last. I joined the advisory board, and I think you're going to be seeing a lot more of me. I learned before the meeting and with your comments a moment ago that community comments are, I guess, allowed before the meeting, but there's no interaction with the school committee. I would humbly suggest that the board consider having community comments before and after the meeting, such that when there's topics that are live, the community can comment on them, as opposed to waiting a month to the next meeting to comment on something that just happened tonight. So if you discuss something tonight and I have a comment, I got to wait till the next meeting to make that comment. So that's my thought. I'd like you to consider adding that to your format.
Is that it?
That's all I had to say? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I may have questions, but it sounds like you're not going to answer my question, so I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's comments. Superintendent McCoy?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My comments will be brief this evening because a majority of our conversation tonight will be around MCAS analysis that Assistant Superintendent Conklin will provide, and then an overview of version 1.0 of the budget, which Ms. Vittori will provide. Just a few updates of the exciting things happening at Pine Hill School and within the district. As you know, one of our district goals around this year is elevating student voice and understanding their perspective, since they are the client to attend school every day, and making sure that they feel like they are heard and they have ownership in some of the decision-making that's happening. So one of the initiatives that we have is shadowing students. So we have had roughly 20 adults, whether that's educators, instructional leaders, such as our PLC leaders or our district leadership, follow a student for the day. We've had lots of positive feedback so far, and there are several other educators who are excited about that opportunity. And so we'll be rolling that out slowly over time to have other educators follow the students for the day, get a sense of what their day is like, what they're engaging with in the classroom, what their homework loads are like, what their after-school schedules are like, all in line with the challenge success program and what challenge success stands for. So we'll certainly provide more feedback and information as that continues. Denny and I have launched the Superintendent Advisory Council, which at this point has 25 middle and high school students. We're going to be meeting with the elementary school students during lunch bunches as well to get their feedback on a number of topics. But it's certainly an honor to be working one-on-one with kids and hearing their input and feedback relative to school practices and policies, but also providing feedback to teachers, the kinds of questions and surveys that we're asking them on a regular basis, and how we can make that more impactful by the information we're collecting, and then how we use that to inform our decisions. So again, more to come on that. We've just had our first meeting. We have been busy working with all of our principals, assistant principals, and coaches, looking at the MCAS data analysis at the secondary level. We're obviously looking at advanced placement scores, SAT scores, ACT scores as well. And Mr. Conklin will be providing an overview of what we have taken away from the spring administration of MCAS at Pine Hill. And again, this evening, we'll be going deep into the budget planning process, which you are all prime members of, and it's a long process. So when we get to that agenda item, we'll give you a little bit more background and context as we start the planning for FY '26. Happy to take any questions or concerns. Otherwise, I would like to hand it over to Assistant Superintendent Conklin to talk about our MCAS results.
Okay.
So before we get going, just a quick update from me in terms of assistant superintendent's updates. So one of the things that I've been working on.
Can you just crank it? Like, if you drag it?
Thank you. So as you all are well aware, we have a new elementary math curriculum, which we've talked about for a while now. So I've spent the past month diving into the new math curriculum in a firsthand way. So I feel like it's really important to get a sense of what the teachers and students are experiencing with the new math curriculum. So I've been going to classrooms, and I've been guest teaching math lessons. And it's been a really valuable experience just to understand the curriculum, to be in the perspective of a teacher when they sit down with teacher manual, online resources, like, what are they really dealing with? What are the kids saying? And how's the math curriculum going? So just a few of my learnings from having taught some math lessons now at Pine Hill. There are tons of resources with the new curriculum, almost too many resources. So we're just trying to figure out how to direct the teachers to what they need and how to find the things that they need to find on the website. The online platform is a little clunky, so we've come up with some screencast files and some kind of quick start guides to help teachers find what they need to find on the online platform. You've heard me talk a lot about Math Talk and Math Discourse and encouraging our students to just express what they're thinking and how they're using different math strategies. And that has been awesome. I'd say that's been the biggest growth point I've seen in my personal experiences and just in observing classes, is that our kids are talking about math. Sometimes it's really, really hard because we're asking them to explain why somebody chose this solution or why somebody chose this pathway to get to an answer. But it's really, I think, forced our students to think about why math works the way it does, rather than just focus on getting to the answer quick. Releasing responsibility is hard. It's another thing I've learned as part of this curriculum. So there are times where you know the students aren't going to know how to do something, and you just have to let them try it and come back with their ideas on how they want to solve it. And then you can lead them through like the mini lesson, but kind of releasing it to the kids can be really, really daunting. I found that out firsthand, where I just wanted to talk to the kids more because I was worried they didn't understand it. But I just had to let it go and let them try to kind of grapple with some of the concepts. I've learned that we have a wide range of learners, so differentiation is really, really important. And it's hard for teachers when they get done with the mini lesson and they split the students into three different groups, and the teacher's working in one small group, and there are two groups working on something else. And if there's not another adult in the classroom, you know, it's a lot to manage for a teacher, I think. There's a lot of language, so you might have heard from any of your children that, you know, you have to talk a lot. The problems have a lot of words in them. And we know that that's a challenge right now, but it's also very reflective of what we're seeing on assessments like the MCAS, what we're seeing in terms of the types of real-world skills and situations we want our students to be looking at. So that's been a learning curve as well. And finally, we know that this is really hard. Again, I've just done a couple of lessons, and it's been very hard. And we're really hoping that our teachers, you know, embrace mistakes and model it for our students, that it's okay for them to make mistakes, that they're welcome and they're expected. So, you know, there was a point during one of the lessons that I did where things just were not going well, and I said, you know what? We're going to regroup and start with something new. And I think that's really good for our students to be seeing from our teachers as well. So things are going well. You know, there's a lot of growing pains in terms of getting used to a new curriculum, but it's been really, really neat to see everything unfold firsthand. So now the heart of the presentation is thinking about our 2024 MCAS results. So before I get going, a quote from John Hattie, who researches a lot about what makes an impact in terms of teaching and learning. And he says in this quote, "The major purpose of assessment in schools should be to provide interpretive information to teachers and school leaders about their impact on students so that these educators have the best information about what steps to take with instruction and how they need to change and adapt." And, you know, if you talk to people, they'll tell you all sorts of things about what does data do. Some people will say, you know, data functions as signals. Some people have made analogy to a flashlight, like, data shines a light on little areas, but doesn't give you that full view of everything going on. But it does give us clues, and it does give us information about ways that we need to change or adapt the way that we work with students. I also think it's important to look at this big data pyramid and just to see that we are using data in a multitude of different ways and at various times throughout the school year. So at the top of this pyramid, you can see we have the things that happen on an annual basis. So the MCAS is something that happens on an annual basis. At the region, our AP scores, our SAT scores. Our L students, they take the access test. So these are things that happen once a year. Two to three times a year, that's when we have various diagnostic tests. That's like our iXL diagnostic, our DIBELS, our phonics screener, our universal math screener, our Panorama SEL surveys. And then at the secondary level, we have midterms and final exams. Then there's data points that we collect more on a quarterly end-of-unit. So that's kind of that end-of-unit assessment or end-of-unit test or quiz or project that students are completing. One to four times a month, you have formative common assessments. So that might be a math problem of the week that every third grader does. It might be a science journal that every fourth grader completes and various other student products. And then we know that our teachers are collecting data on a daily basis. So they finish a math lesson, they do an exit ticket, they get a sense of what students have learned. They're walking around, talking to students, seeing what they're absorbing, what they're struggling with. That's all data that they are kind of taking into mind to plan for the next day and to use. So this just gives you a picture of the fact that, you know, it's important to note that there's tons of data that our teachers are paying attention to, and that the MCAS, while it's an important indicator, is only one of those pieces at the very, very top that only happens once a year. So with that being said, I want to start off just by talking a little bit about the overall state landscape with the MCAS and some trends that we saw across the entire state of Massachusetts last year. So the first one is that almost across the board, ELA results have shown a continued gap since kind of COVID happened. So we're seeing ELA results kind of go downward across the state. In terms of math results, there were some improved achievements statewide in third grade math. But besides that, it was relatively flat in terms of overall scores throughout Massachusetts in math. Science showed improvement, and we only do the science MCAS in grades five, 10, and grade eight. Lower achievement in grade eight across the state, although I did say at the region's meeting that our eighth graders actually showed a huge amount of growth. So that's a place where we were different than the state. Another important point statewide is just knowing that chronic absenteeism is having an impact on student achievement. So we think about students who are chronically absent, that students who are absent for 20 days or more, which makes sense, that it's hard to achieve. It's hard to learn if you're not in school to learn, be able to learn in the first place. So that gives you an idea of the overall state landscape that we're seeing. Another thing that's going to come up throughout the rest of this presentation are two different measures on the MCAS. So a student's score represents their achievement. So often, we look at scores, and that's a comparison from one year to the next. So this year's first third graders and what they got in terms of a number score versus last year's third graders. So you're comparing year by year. So you're comparing one grade of students to last year's grade of students. The measure of growth is called an SGP, a student growth percentile. And that measures how much students have improved since their performance in the previous year. So that's actually showing the growth that students are making since they last took the test. So that's what we want to see as well. We want to see high achievement, but at the same time, we want to see that students are showing growth in their SGPs. So that's in a number that we'll see as well. So in terms of Pine Hill and their MCAS results, so I'll give you an overview of ELA, math, and science in grades three through five, and then talk a little bit about some of these really big highlights, some areas that we want to focus on, and then how it all connects to our district improvement efforts. So when we think about ELA in grades three through five, I think the biggest thing that I take away from these results is that Pine Hill and Sherburne continue to exceed the state averages. So you can see the percentage of our students who met or exceeded expectations was 21% higher than the state average, our scaled score. Again, that measure of achievement was 13 points above the state average, and our SGPs, our student growth, 8.6 points higher than the state average. So those comparisons continue to show that our students are performing better than the state. And also, when we look at the growth from '23 to '24, you can see that the level of proficiency went down 7% since last year in the meaning and exceeding. But that does fall in line with the overall state trend that I had just mentioned about ELA scores decreasing across the state. In terms of math, you can see, again, that we continue to outperform state averages and that we saw 1% increase in our students that were exceeding. But we also saw that we, last year, had 57% of our students meeting expectations versus 49% of students in 2024. So there is areas for growth, and we'll talk about the ways that we're planning to dissect this data and to lead to further growth for 2025. And then science happens only in grade five. So you can see, again, we exceed the state averages. There's no SGP for science because there's nothing to compare it to because students have never taken it before. And you can see that we had 65% of our students who met or exceeded expectations in fifth grade science. That was up 1% from the previous year. In terms of scaled score, we stayed about even in terms of the scaled score. So these are just some of the data points. But in our analysis that we did with our building leaders at Pine Hill, here are some of the successes that we wanted to highlight. So again, our Pine Hill students continue to perform above the state averages. We saw that our high-need students, when we use that term "high needs", that's three populations that are encompassed in high needs. Those are our students with disabilities, our low-income students, and our English learners. They did show growth in ELA. Their SGP increased by 16 points from 2023. So that, again, is different from the state trend where we saw scores go down. In math, our low-income students proficiency rates, so the proficiency is exceeding or meeting expectations. It's good news there. There is proficiency rates. We're either at or above pre-COVID levels. So that's been an indicator that we've heard a lot about from the state, is, you know, how are we doing in comparison to pre-COVID? Additionally, our low-income students are showing higher SGPs, higher growth compared to last year. So when we look at our subgroups of students, that's good news for that subgroup, our low-income students. Another spot to highlight, our fourth-grade ELA. Students with disabilities, their proficiency increased from 9% in 2023 to 41% in 2024. So we saw a lot of growth with our students with disabilities in fourth-grade ELA. And then we made some modest gains in the essay writing and language skills in fifth-grade ELA. So these statistics, again, relating to ELA, are important to consider that state context of scores going down. To see this growth specifically from a lot of our subgroups is very encouraging. Areas that we want to focus on. Overall, despite some of the growth that we've seen, we do continue to see a gap in how our students with disabilities perform versus their peers in all content areas and across grade levels. So there is still an achievement gap between our students with disabilities and our students without disabilities. So that's something that we want to pay particular attention to. When we went through the item analysis, looking at questions and question types on ELA, we found that our students need more support specifically in the area of writing. And then very, very specifically in topic development, literary analysis, and on the essay-writing portion of the exam. When we went through the math item analysis, we saw some pretty consistent trends in students needing some more support in numbers and operations, specifically with fractions. Feel very good about our new math curriculum and that's going to address some of these areas. We want to place an overall focus on just having students write more frequently across content areas so they see writing not just as part as ELA. But with the new math curriculum, I had just mentioned, there's a lot of language involved, so our students are writing more in math now. And certainly, in social studies and science, we want students to see that the writing they do in one content area, they can take the skills from that and kind of generalize them to other content areas. Finally, we want to give students some more experience reading and analyzing informational texts across content areas throughout the school year. And a lot of that, again, can happen through science and social studies as well as continuing to diversify the texts that we're having students read in ELA. So these are some of the specific focus areas that we're looking at at Pine Hill. And all of the things that we saw are closely connected to our district improvement efforts. So we do want to see our scores from Pine Hill continue to go up. And we've put a lot of things into place this year to help make that happen. And again, not just about our MCAS scores, but overall student achievement. So one of the things that I mentioned in our last Sherburne School Committee meeting was our dad team meetings and the way that our teachers, administrators, our counselors all meet, go over student information, and then they make decisions based on that information. So our dad team meetings have been very, very successful in figuring out which specific areas students need more support in. And we've put interventions in place in order to help students get what they need. We've also organized all of our data this year onto a new platform called Open Architects, which makes it a lot easier for our teachers and our staff to access and to look at the data in the dashboard. Beforehand, you'd have to go onto the Desi's website, log into this portal, go to this thing called Edwin, and it takes forever. It's very confusing. So now we have the data in a very friendly way, and we're walking staff through protocols on how to access and interpret that data. So Pine Hill, at a faculty meeting, is going to be going over these MCAS results, analyzing it. Individual teams of teachers are going to be analyzing the data. So they're going to be looking at item analysis, seeing where students might have struggled last year, and thinking about ways to improve instruction in those areas this year. And as I noted, we kind of have this gap between our students with disabilities and our students without disabilities. So our special ed department, led by our special ed coordinator at Pine Hill, is going to be doing their own, they're going to be part of the whole school MCAS analysis, but they're going to be in their special ed department team going over this data as well. In terms of math, obviously, we're implementing a new curriculum that's focusing a lot on number routines and fluency. So we're hoping that those specific areas are going to, we're going to see improvement on. We have much better diagnostic tests to identify student needs. So this was the first year that we used a universal math screener at the beginning of the year to think about areas that students might need extra support in. And we're continuing to use iXL to monitor and to dipstick where our students were at in math. And then for our students that need that tier-two intervention, that extra support, we've adopted a new curriculum to use that's an evidence-based curriculum called the Bridges Math Program just for our students that need interventions. In terms of ELA, again, we are using much better diagnostic tests this year in order to identify our student needs. So we're giving the DIBELS diagnostic in grades K through five. Previously, it was only given in K through two, so that's expanded. And we're finding that in terms of measuring students' reading level, it has about, you know, 80 to 90% accuracy. We're using a new screener for phonics called the 95% screener, 95% screener in grades K through two. And we've adopted a new evidence-based intervention system for students in ELA, 95% phonics lessons. The great thing about that is that based on how students do on the screener, it points our interventionists and our teachers to specific lessons to implement with those students to very specifically target the areas that that diagnostic screener is showing. So overall, again, I feel like there have been a lot of growth at Pine Hill in terms of the systems that we're using. When we think about having our tier-one or tier-two and our tier-three interventions, our NTSS model over the past three or four years has continued to expand. We have additional instructional coaching happening. So the school has shown a ton of improvement and a ton of attention to ways that we can better support all of our students. And, you know, the MCAS is one slice of the information that we get. So Superintendent McCoy, did you want to add anything?
No, thank you. Happy to take.
Questions and comments?
Yep, that's great. Thank you for sharing that. Very comprehensive. Thanks. Do you want to see if anyone is raising their hand on? Jesus, I don't know if Becca's still on there or not. Kimberly.
Does anybody on Zoom have any questions or comments? Or Kimberly, or Becca?
All good from my end. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda are the financial reports.
Next on the agenda are the financial reports. Ms. Vittori?
Yes, thank you. In your packet are your two monthly financial reports. The first one are the warrants that were sent over to the town for processing since the last time you met. They are categorized by the fund that they're coming from, and within the general fund, which one of the operating line items is coming from. Again, those are always available for members to review at Town Hall, as well as we keep copies at Central Office if you ever want to explore a little bit more of what those look for. We bring them to you just because you have one signer, and that we're allowing everyone to see what the one signer is authorizing on your behalf. Next up is your monthly financial update. So I wasn't with you in October, but in September, I sort of gave you a little snapshot as to where we were standing. It was all really positive information from a perspective of cost savings from the operating budget. So as you know, Dr. Brown retired, and that seemed to put into place a domino effect. One of the strong things you always want to see is internal succession planning. And with her replacement and then being internal, and then Allison's replacement being internal, you can start seeing how things are going to start falling, as well as two mid-year retirements were announced in June that were going to take place this year. So when you add all that up, there's actually a lot of payroll savings that we are experiencing for fiscal year '25, and you're going to see that rolling into the budget for fiscal year '26. So as best as I could, I added, tried to keep the numbers going for you, so you can see how much is based on the post-fiscal year '25 budget changes. Also, as you know, in March last year, we made the decision to move the Connections Program over to Chicory. At that point in time, the classroom educator and the associated EAs were pulled out of Sherburne's March budget. But at that point in time, we had not fully dissected into the other operating pieces of that, knowing that it would take us just a little more time. So you're also seeing some positive impacts from the last couple of pieces coming out of the Sherburne budget. A big piece of that was OT, so occupational therapy. That personnel was actually moved from Pine Hill over to Chicory, as well as a few other costs associated with running that program. So that also is adding to the positive outcomes that we're seeing right now. So on the salaries, lots of good things to say as far as savings. We have had some small additions. So based on the Pine Hill composition right now of English learners, we have had to add a point-two FTE for that, with a changeover of staff with our out-of-district coordinator. That out-of-district coordinator position is shared by all three districts, and it had previously been shared with an educator at the high school. When that person retired, it gave us the opportunity to sort of revisit how we wanted to sort of set that position up. And so we ended up doing the person's half-time out-of-district coordinator for both towns, as well as filling the needs of setting up a preschool director with our three preschool classes, and the need to constantly be doing external evaluations of incoming preschool-age students. That was a need that we identified. So we have a point-five preschool director that's being shared, point-two with Pine Hill, and point-three with Chicory. So that point-two was an add to your operating budget for fiscal year '25, along with two special ed EAs. They're one-to-one EAs for students that have presented the needs since our budget was approved last March. And you will see those positions rolling into the fiscal year '26 budget, as those are still needed to continue into fiscal year '26. On the expenditure side, it's been pretty operating to where we expected. The only one I want to highlight is classroom instructional software. And Denny's presentation sort of highlighted some of the reasons why we're seeing an overage in that account. If you heard him say, "DIBELS used to be K-2, and now it's K-5." There's a couple of those programs that we've expanded K-5, as we continue to want to do more data accumulation, as well as we added district-wide an AI tool for educators. And there was one other little small thing. So that are things that we felt necessary to add to fiscal year '25. You're going to see an increase in the budget for '26 as well to cover those things. So a lot of what we're talking about actually helps prep us for talking about '26, but that's a little bit of insight into that. Any questions on sort of the in-district before I talk about out-of-district, just from the monthly report? Okay, so as you know, we always look at our budget in two pieces. So the out-of-district, we budgeted for thirteen out-of-district placements. And just for the new members, just to reaffirm, that represents Sherburne residents aged three to twenty-two, who are not educated within the district. All the costs of that sits in the Sherburne school budget, nothing sits in the region. So you're, it's, that's why we look at it as two separate budgets, because it's really not Pine Hill budget, it's more of a regional agreement scenario where you're, we're covering all residents of Sherburne in this particular budget. So we budgeted for thirteen, we have thirteen, which doesn't happen all the time. We had quite a few placement changes. So our tuition costs are under budget by one-hundred-and-sixty. But those placement changes resulted in higher transportation costs, unfortunately. So they almost netted out. So your tuition is under budget by one-hundred-and-sixty, but the transportation costs are over by one-hundred-and-fifty. So right now, we're looking at a net positive of ten thousand, which is actually good, because if you recall, the last couple of years, we've been severely over budget. So I think we've stabilized. I'm going to say that tomorrow, we're going to find out, all new placements. But at least we've got the same thirteen that we predicted, they just changed where they are. And unfortunately, the cost changed with that, but I think that puts us in a good place as we start building the budget for fiscal year '26. Since we last met in September, circuit breaker reimbursement has been finalized. So the circuit breaker reimbursement, remember, is what we're eligible to be reimbursed by the state based on fiscal year '24 expenditures. So it's, we report all of our expenditures from fiscal year '24, they calculate what the reimbursement's going to be, and you get it in fiscal year '25. So Sherburne is receiving a little over half a million dollars in circuit breaker reimbursement. It's comprised of seventy-five percent of tuition costs. So anything that we're over the threshold, which in fiscal year '25, the threshold was about fifty-one thousand, so you have to spend, we have to cover at least the fifty-one thousand. Anything over fifty-one thousand of eligible tuition costs, we get reimbursed at seventy-five percent. So that is your circuit breaker tuition reimbursement. And over the last couple of years, they have added transportation costs. So now that's become the figure that we don't know what the reimbursement's going to be. It used to be that the seventy-five percent on tuition, we never knew exactly what was going to be. But the way the regulations are working now, tuition has to be covered at seventy-five percent before anything will be paid on transportation. So it would be highly unlikely that we'd never would see, we'd see anything less than seventy-five percent on tuition. So that is actually a really good thing to know, that we can bank on the seventy-five percent. And now the unknown is how much you're going to get for transportation. In fiscal year '24, we actually got fifty-seven percent reimbursement on transportation. We only got forty-four percent this year. But I never include estimates for transportation when we're looking at circuit breaker and how much we can apply to your budget, mainly because that now has become the unknown, and that becomes an extra money that we have to cover unbudgeted placements, unbudgeted placement cost, et cetera. So that gives us a little bit more of a cushion. And so far, year-to-date, we had budgeted to use three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars of circuit breaker. The way the tuition by students plotted out, by who I put the circuit breaker fund, we're actually using about four-hundred thousand of circuit breaker. And we probably will keep that at four-hundred thousand, because we did receive five-hundred thousand. So we do have a nice cushion in case there are any unbudgeted placements that come up during the school year, which would avoid us having to ask for additional supplemental appropriation from the town. I think that's the situation we'd like to be in, that we always have in the reserve enough to cover one typical out-of-district placement, just so that we have that. So that is good news on that front, and new information for you as far as what the computed circuit breaker reimbursement is for '25. Any questions on that? Nope. So I just wanted to give you a brief update. As you know, the town approved last year the HVAC cooling project. The engineers had their first site visit on October thirtieth. They're in the stages right now of selecting the equipment. I think by the end of this week, they think they will have that piece selected for us, for us to sort of sign off on. And then they go into the structural design and the specs design, so they'll be ready to put the RFP out by January. Good news is that there has actually been a huge reduction in the delivery time for HVAC equipment. So we are, they're feeling, I'm not going to say, but they're feeling really comfortable that this is all going to play out, the equipment will be in, and this will be installed this coming summer. And just to refresh your memory, we are putting new rooftop units that can do dual cooling and heating in the library, the auditorium, and the cafeteria. So we selected those big three areas, because it'll allow us to use spaces where, that are used throughout the day. In the library, it will hopefully provide some cooling relief to the classrooms in that wing, that tend to get the higher temperatures during the day. And it will do wonders for our humidity that we experience during the summer. And you will see the humidity playing out when we talk about capital. So everything's related. And so that, we're looking forward to that, because that humidity is something that is really daunting in that building in the summertime. It's amazing how humid it gets. So that will bring some relief from that, from that standpoint. So we're, we'll keep you updated on that. Our fingers are crossed that when they put it out to bid, it stays within that bid total capital cost of four-hundred thousand that we approved, but we'll keep you updated on that for sure. The last thing I just wanted to highlight, you probably don't see this person's name very frequently, but she's a key piece in my business office. But Leanne Wilkie, who was my assistant business administrator, has been with the district for twelve years in various roles, had actually been in this role a year before I got into my role, has fully retired as of October thirty-first. She was in partial retirement. I was thinking we were going to be able to keep the partial retirement going, but she's ready for the next chapter in her life, so her last day was October thirty-first. We have posted the position, we're in the process of interviewing, and I'm hopeful that we'll have someone hired by the end of the month. But if there's some slow responses to certain things, just know that I'm down a person, and we're trying to keep up. But probably doesn't impact you guys very much, but sometimes some of the people out in the school will be a little slower in responding. But I just wanted to make sure I gave her the proper thanks, because she definitely, twelve years in the business office is a lot of time, and she will be greatly missed.
Any questions or comments for Dawn from the committee?
Nope. Thank you.
Discussion items?
No discussion items.
There are no discussion items. Okay. Next on the agenda are action items. These items may involve further discussion before calling for a vote. So tonight, we will be looking at the first version of the operating and capital budgets, and Superintendent McCoy, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. So first, I would like to thank all the members of the Sherburne community and our taxpayers who continue to prioritize education. We know it is certainly the bright spot of our community, and why many of our parents and caregivers move here to raise their children. And so we appreciate all that our taxpayers do to make sure that we can continue to provide for our students on an annual basis. I'd like to thank the Sherburne Advisory Committee, of which we have three members tonight. Thank you for keeping in perspective the larger view of the town and its needs, and providing us guidance so that we can do what we need at the school level in collaboration with what's happening in other departments across the town. And I'd like to thank the school committee for coming on this journey with us, starting tonight and all the way through March, as we continue to work on versions two and version three of the budget. As you know, we have a five-year strategic plan. We are in year two of that strategic plan, so we use the initiatives and the goals of that strategic plan to guide our decision-making around not only what we do every day for kids, but how we spend our finances and how we budget for our resources. Specifically, Pine Hill School has a school improvement plan that speaks to that larger strategic plan, but also speaks to the details needed specifically at the elementary level. So we use those two documents to, again, to decide, guide our decision-making, but also are always looking for opportunities for cost savings. And as Dawn will use the phrase often, "send smarter," so that we, together with the additional needs that the schools might need, in addition to cost savings, can come up with a fiscally responsible budget to present to the towns. This process begins in October with Dawn's guidance as our business administrator. The principals meet with their instructional leaders and their curriculum leaders to determine the needs of their schools moving forward. They then come to Central Office, and they meet with myself, Denny, Dawn, Kate McCarthy, our Director of Student Services, and Brendan Hall, Brandon Hall, our Director of Educational Technology, so that we can look holistically at the budget, to make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of our priorities and needs. And then we send all that information to Dawn and Budget Office upstairs, and she does her magic to develop version 1.0, which is here tonight for your review. So without further ado, Dawn, please share with us.
Thank you for that background. And then just to give you a brief overview of the timeline. So we are approving version 1.0 this evening in order to meet the town's request that all department budgets be submitted by, I think, December eighth, I think, was in their memo. But we usually, that's why we're meeting in November to get that set. From there, we'll come back together in February, because at that point, we should have a little bit more information. Remember, we're just in November in fiscal year '25, so this is our best, our best guess right now of where we stand. By the time February comes, we could have a version 2.0 to present to you, because more factors, more data points could be accessible. We also will bring some additional information about some of the ads that are in the budget to give you more support behind those. And then we meet in February, first of February, because then our meeting with Sherburne Advisory follows on February twelfth. So there's a timing where we try to make sure that school committee has approved the most up-to-date version that we can before we go before advisory. And Dan, maybe just before I start any further, if you want to just introduce your members that are here tonight?
Yeah, be delighted to. Hey, everybody. So I think many of you know me, I'm Dan Sickle, Chair of Sherburne Advisory, and glad to be here and glad to get a chance to hear a presentation. And I'll just say, Dawn has been a very good partner and a, you know, a really terrific person for us to work with on that. Other, so we always have a set of school liaisons, a subset of advisory that really focuses in on school issues, and that would be Paul Peelot, and Kingsley, and Mike Winters would be the other who's not here. If you guys want to say hi, that's great, and then we're, I think, good.
Paul's always here with us, so.
This is my seven-year advisor. So I enjoyed working with Dawn last year.
I've said my piece. All right, good. Thank you.
So if you're ever wondering, they're usually here in the audience, and they're here because of the liaison to the other members of Sherburne Warren, to gain more information, to support the budget as we, as we move through the process. And so we put together, we feel like, hopefully, a complete sort of package of data for you to be able to use as you review the budget. And again, this is just version 1.0. I don't think there's any plans tonight to go deep into some of the discussion items, but to lay out the pieces that are there for you to take some time. As you review and you have any questions, if you will, you can always feel free to send them to Christine, your chair, who will filter them to us to answer. So don't ever think that you have to hold a question, you're always free to send a question to us, just so that we can start working on any questions you may have. So in your budget, we have a cover memo that sort of lays out, just sort of, it's like an executive summary. And it sort of tells you that, how we go about developing the budget. So obviously, at an elementary school, where the budget is predominantly at one elementary school, enrollment is one of the key things that we look at before we even start building the budget. And in your tab three, you're going to see our ten-year projections, our actuals, and then projection. And it is a formula that was derived by one of our previous superintendents, where it looks at in-migration and out-migration as of October first. So if you always have the same data points of October first, and you compare data from grade three between those years, if you can look down at the percentages then on the three-year rate and the one-year rate, it shows you the growth. So the three-year rate is looking at the growth over three years, and the one-year rate is looking at, obviously, what just happened this past year. We use both those data points, because sometimes there's something that's happening particularly for a year, so we like to highlight it. But we have a tendency to move forward with a three-year rate in most cases, because that's giving you sort of what happens not in just one year, but over a period of time. It's also interesting, I think, to take this data graph and follow like a kindergarten grade all the way down. You will see that it's rare that you don't see growth in a grade every year. And I think partly is that is like families that move in to town probably have K-through-five-age students that are continuing to build the grades. And you usually do see an increase between K and one. I don't know if it happens historically anymore, but we used to have definitely families that would send their students to private kindergartens and then join us in first grade. It's like you still see a little bit of that. You know, last year's kindergarten, you know, grew a little bit from fifty, well, that didn't grow that very much, but some years we'll see, you know, much, much larger growth numbers in that. So we, right now, for kindergarten, are using the three-year average. We will get the census from the town by the next time we meet, just to see how that is looking compared to what the three-year average is. So you may see us tweak the kindergarten number once we get a more valid data point. But I think this is good to look at. You can see that we, one thing that we have is we don't have consistency in grades. You've got a grade right now that has a high of seventy-six, and our low is fifty-one. So there is some, right, some different, which is a, is a, makes our life a So there is some, right, some different, which is a, is a, makes our life a little more difficult, because we really try to craft the budget for exactly the students that we have. But you also don't want to be a yo-yo and takeaway add, takeaway add. So we're very methodical before we adjust staff either way. But I think it's good for you guys to spend some time, look at some of the grade cohorts, and just see what's happening with your population. The other thing we take into consideration is the guidance from the town. And so that is what I had brought for you tonight to add to your notebook. We received that just after I did the delivery. But to that point, I think that it's pretty consistent. And we do try to always strive to have a level-funded budget where we can. We make cost cuts where we can. We're very good about if we add something for one year, that's a one-time. We pull it out the next year, so it doesn't become embedded in our base budget. And so you will see in your budget books and the detailed line items, you know, a lot of changes. So we don't just go with the norm. We do dive into each of the accounts and see what we can do, what we can't do. And so I think with that, that we're definitely following the town's guidance. We are bound by our contractual agreements, which the majority of our employees are under contractual agreements. And so those are negotiated with school committee, town select board members, join us. So that's a joint project when we come to agreement with the contractual increases.
Dawn, a quick question. What is the class cutoff number to go from three classes to four classes?
So your guidelines are 18 to 23. But those are sort of guidelines, so you can't go exact sometimes, because if you go down a section, you could be over the 23. But that's your guidelines, 18 to 23. And we did change that, I want to say about four years ago. Pine Hill used to have a class size range from K to three and four to five. Your high range went all the way up to 25. And so we consolidated those two ranges to one range for K-5, which was 18 to 23, that more aligned you with what Dover has for their policy, which they operate with 17 to 22. So basically, the same thing. But that 25 was a little bit of an outlier in those older grades. And so that alleviated some of the stress that we were getting when we were looking at sections. So that was a school committee decision several years ago to go down to the 18 to 23. But that data point is on your enrollment for you to look at, yeah. And then as Beth mentioned, and we've included in the notebook for you, the 23-28 strategy and school improvement plans, because those definitely then do help drive our budgetary decisions on the larger items such as curriculum, staffing, et cetera. And I also added in there the best practices tool, because I think that comes into play too when we're looking at some PD that we might be doing. And just to give you a better insight too, I think it's good to have it all in one place. So I felt like that was a helpful tool, like this should be your little reference book with all of that included. And then the last thing that is sort of one of our assumptions is that we're going to continue to receive our entitlement grants. So in tab two, you're going to see the grants that we do receive on an annual basis and how those are incorporated into the budget. And any given year, if we did not get one of those grants, it would probably be an increase to the operating budget, because we use the grants for things that we really do need. And so if we lost the grant, I just want everyone to be aware of what could need to come into the budget in any situation, just so that you see the whole picture. And so there's, I mean, I think the largest one that we depend on is the REAP grant and then the SPED 240, which funds several of our educational assistance for special ed. So with that, we've put together version 1.0. And right now, we're looking at an overall operating budget increase of just a little over $200,000, which represents a 2.43% increase. Last year's overall increase was 3.99%. Just to put some perspective, your version 1.0, though, last year was looking at an eight, over an 8% increase. So if you compare eight to 2.43%, I think we're looking much better than how we rolled out last year. Keep in mind, though, that the fiscal year '25 increase of 3.99% included the movement, moving of the connections. And our 2.43% this year includes all those staffing changes. So our normal operating increase, if we didn't have those two situations, would be closer to the 5%. So I just want to make sure that we're transparent about that, that we won't expect to see increases like this low level in a normal year. We just happen to have things that happen that are allowing that to compute to that such a low value or a low percentage increase. And then our, if you break it apart, because as I said, we talk about our budgets in two pieces, your in-district increase because of all the salary savings was only 1.39%. Basically, the cost savings offset all the contractual increases in the contracts. And the out-of-district operating budget still showed an increase, a little higher, a little less than last year, but still is driving your higher number of 9.91%. And as I mentioned, if we did not have those changes from the post-budget, that your number would have been closer to 5%. And I also want to highlight that the budget, version 1.0 for Circuit Breaker funding is at $300,000. We used $375,000 in the fiscal year '25 budget. And another data point that I added this year is on your summary, in the gray area at the bottom, is actually the amount of Circuit Breaker that we use in each of those years, because you have to look at that as part of your total operating budget. So part of your out-of-district gets funded with Circuit Breaker. We put that on there so that you can really see the true picture of Circuit Breaker. I've done a rough estimate of Circuit Breaker expected in '26, based on our '25 expenses. And it's just under $300,000 excluding transportation. So we may have a little bit more to add in later versions if we don't have any unbudgeted placements. But otherwise, we're looking at, this is about what we're expecting to receive. So I went with the more, the higher number, so that we had a more, best-guest budget for this point in time. So if we look at our key budget drivers, as I've already mentioned, enrollment is one of the key things for in-district, and you have that to look at. Payroll is 87% of your budget. So that is a huge payroll driver. And our contractual increases in all of our contracts right now are 3% for COLA. But keep in mind, your educators have their steps in lanes, which can be anywhere from 4% to 9% added to the 3%. And typically, if we look at that over all of our educators, we're looking at about a 1.6% increase on top of the COLA. So your, your normal educator increase, and that's your veterans and your people who are continuing to get the steps in the lanes, is usually just right under 5%, which is what drives our 5% number that I tell you if we did not have changes. So that is a good, a good piece of information to realize is that educators, and not just the COLA, is the steps in the lanes. And also realize that we are in the final year of a three-year contract. So this is year three numbers that you're seeing. So in fiscal year '27, dare I say, when we start planning that, we'll have a reserve like we did in fiscal year '22. And as I mentioned, we have approximately $260,000 of payroll savings that is being reflected in fiscal year '26 budget, based on the staffing changes. And we also have additional reductions based on the move of connections. And then we're, again, this is all repeating what you've heard in the fiscal year '25 annual, I mean, monthly report. And then our staff increases, the ones that are already in our fiscal year '25 budget that we're moving forward, is the Point 2 EL educator, the Point 2 pre-K director, and the two additional special education assistants that will still be needed, because the students are still, will be with us at Pine Hill. If we have any retirements, which we're not aware of any right now, they will be reflected in future versions. But we were fortunate enough to have the two retirements that happened post-budget to be able to go ahead and have those savings in our first version. Just looking at expenditures, a couple of things. Again, another reduction in connections, we had some outside services that was, that supported the connection students that we were able to decrease the budget for. If you remember, and Denny talked about, we adopted the new math curriculum, which was a large one-time expense. We are reducing the general textbooks by $30,000 to pull that number out. We do, are seeing increases in technology-related accounts. One talks about the curriculum-related programs that we have discussed already, and the other is hardware replacements. We have maintained about a $20,000 technology hardware budget line item over the last several years. This, coming in fiscal year '26, that is all going to predominantly be used by replacing the, all of our staff devices. We do do a four-year lease now, but that one-year lease payment will probably be just under $20,000. But also, working with our Director of Educational Technology, it is time to replace the access points at Pine Hill, which is what sort of powers the Wi-Fi in the building. So we have $15,000 in the budget right now to cover the replacement of all of those. That is a hardware item that is eligible for E-rate, so reimbursement, from the state for that. And that potentially could be anywhere between 40% and 50%. Those E-rate applications are, haven't gone in yet. So we put the total number in. But if we realize, if we find out we're going to get awarded and know for sure, we can reduce the version two or version 3.0 for the expectation that we will get E-rate reimbursement. We just don't know that for sure yet. So that is an increase of $24,500 for those two. It's also time for our general transportation contract to go out to bid. We're in the fifth year in fiscal year '25. So in your fiscal year '26 budget is a reserve for the transportation increase, along with, we're continuing to see increases in our utilities. And it's mainly, we're locked in on our supply costs, but what we're not locked in is our delivery costs. And we're continuing to see increases of that. So we're increasing the budget to try to keep up with our actuals. And so those two numbers together is an addition of about $60,000. Just for your information, we typically, in our transportation contract period, see a large increase in year one, and then very smooth and low numbers in year two through five. And so that's why we see that sort of a larger uptick that we absorb all in year one. And then you can see, you know, year two and three are probably less than 3% or 4%. And if you agree to take on the extra two years, four and five, those are usually like 1% or 2%. So it is front-loaded in year one. So we're anticipating that to be the same. We haven't gone out to bid, but we're anticipating that. So we are carrying a generous reserve in the transportation line items for all three districts for the new contract, which we will have before your March meeting.
The last time we went to bid, did we go with the same company that we did previously?
Yes, and have been, I think, from the beginning of time. Conley, typically, and you will find this across the state, when school districts go out for their transportation contracts, they typically get one bid. And so that, don't know if that landscape is going to change. It could. We're definitely seeing our Meco transport company did change. So I think there are some other companies that are trying to branch out and move around. So we'll see, obviously, competition. And a bidding process is healthy. But Conley has been our transportation company for at least 20, 30 years, if not longer. So, and I think they provide very sound and valuable service and do a lot of the Metro West districts. So that does that.
Do we know how much we, how much we pay in comparison to other towns?
Yeah, so typically, what we'll do is we will look at a per-bus rate. I will tell you, it's really hard sometimes, though, to compare apples to apples. Because a lot of times, what's built into your bus rate is your mileage that you're driving and how you do, how you do your runs. So we use one bus to do two runs. So you're going to get a better price if you've got a driver who's going to be within a four-hour period, do two runs. We share that cost. We do have three separate contracts with the bus company. But incorporated into those three contracts are the fact that we're sharing buses with the region. So Dover shares 10 buses with the region. Sherburne shares nine buses with the region. So that is a very cost-effective way for us to do it. And they look at it, you know, we have three separate contracts, but when they're bidding it, they're assuming that's going to happen. And so that will, you know, but we do look at, as close as we can, what a per-bus is. And we definitely had great data, data about that during COVID, because as you know, no one was running their buses. And so we're trying to figure out, like, you know, what kind of rebate, what to do, what's their base cost, that they wouldn't go out of business? So we, at that point, we are sharing all kinds of information that I still have for comparative purposes. But if you keep in mind, this is a five-year contract, how much has happened in the world? So that's why, and I think that's typical even without being where we are now, because they've got to play catch-up a little bit. So that's why I think they try to bring us up to where we should be in year one. And then we can go, you know, more with the norm in year two. This past five years, I will say, we've seen, we do have a fuel adjustment clause, and we definitely have seen that kick in. And so you've noticed over the last couple of years, we've had to add transportation increases for the fuel adjustment. Because that doesn't, diesel fuel seems to be something that hasn't really gone down the same way, you know, as regular fuel has. And so with, five years ago, if you think about what our fuel adjustment clause was set on, it wasn't anywhere near what we're seeing now. So that will be reset in this new contract. Fuel cost adjustment will probably go away initially. And then you have to see how it, how it trends. But we have a 20%, they set a rate and you go 20% either way before the fuel credit or fuel surcharge kicks in. So we will share the RFP with all three committees, so that you can sort of see what goes into that, that contract. So that's our one thing right now that we really have a reserve on, that we, is an unknown at this point. Also, for your in-district, in tab two, you have a summary that looks similar to your monthly financial reports, but it gives you year-to-date information for '22, '23, '24. Shows you budget for '25 and then your '26. And then the only time that we sort of roll out every single account that's in our general ledger is for this process, and those are your large pages. You might have to get your magnifying glass out, because we try to conserve how many pieces of paper we do. But this gives you a really good perspective of sort of three years of actuals. You sort of know that our, what our budget looks like, or 25 actuals look like. We don't drop them in yet. And then you can sort of see the increases. We try to give you as much explanation as possible, so there are notes by each line item for your review. And included in that, then too, is a summary of staffing, so that you can sort of see the people that make up the 87% of your payroll. You have your summary of anticipated grants. And then you have the technology supplement plan, which talks about the staff replacement laptops, as I pointed out, and the access points for the Wi-Fi coverage. We've already talked about tab three, which is your enrollment. So that is, sort of gives you a brief overview of your in-district budget. So before I jump to the out-of-district budget, just anything jumps out you or any questions that you may have?
If I may, may I circle back to one thing that you talked about?
Yes.
You're talking about updating the access points? I have to admit, I'm unfamiliar, but is there any parts of Pine Hill that do suffer with Wi-Fi access, or we would be looking to expand it? Or are we just looking at essentially a, like, one-to-one upgrade of the infrastructure that's already there?
From what I understand, I don't think we have any weaknesses in the elementary schools. It's mainly just that these have surpassed their useful life. Obviously, you bring in new ones, you're going to even probably get better Wi-Fi access. But we're, from their initial discussion with us, there's no need to expand. It's a one-to-one replacement.
What about speed?
So we just upgraded our, sort of, our Sonic wall here, firewall, sorry, firewall. So we just upgraded our sort of air, our sonic wall here, firewall, sorry, firewall. And we have updated our speeds greatly for Wi-Fi and it's all being managed by an outside consultant. And so we are no longer paying directly for any of our own Wi-Fi or internet coverage. It's all being covered by the outside group and we, I think, if I understand, we at least doubled if not tripled the speed. I think it's all relative, but we definitely had an increase in that with the, with the upgrade.
Thank you.
So with that, the other piece of your operating budget is the out-of-district. And so we're looking at 13, the same 13 placements that we have in 25 continuing in 26. What I haven't done a deep dive on yet is the transportation cost. So that's one piece that will be refined in version 2.0. Right now I'm carrying, I believe, the, oh, I am carrying the actual. So hopefully that won't be what it is. We'll go back and look, but we did increase that. But what I did incorporate is except to transports, the majority of our students, we're waiting for their budget to be approved so that we know what the increase is going to be. So that is really a placeholder, at least to get us up to actual for that piece. In tab four, we try to give you a little more insight into sort of the types of schools our out-of-district students are attending and in what grade levels, because you're also looking at, you know, who's going to age out or graduate. As you can see, we don't have anyone scheduled to be in 12th grade next year, so we're not looking at any age outs. But you will see that you can sort of track as they're, as they're flowing down because there's a good chance that some of the elementary students could go out of district, but then be able to come back to district at the middle school. But this gives you an idea. And I will have to say, it's really beneficial for us to have one of our highest cost categories in the collaborative. So we'll talk about accept collaborative, we'll talk about tech collaborative. Those are where we're members, they pool their resources together districts to send students with like disabilities. They're a lower-cost provider than if you went to a non-public school or an out-of-state school. So it's good to see that we have a lot of students in the collaboratives. That's a very cost-efficient way to send students out of district. And you, you don't always see that when you look at other districts, so I wanted to highlight that and thank our special education placement staff for sort of always, you always want to look at if you have a close nearby public school, then a collaborative. So you want to look at the most cost-efficient and least restricted place to send students. So we also try to roll forward for you last year's budget compared to this year's budget. And this sort of sells the story of what we talked about in the fiscal year 25 monthly report. Changes in placement was a savings for us and then really our only increase then was the tuition increase. So even though you see net activity of 89,000, that's not what you see on your budget because keep in mind, we're using 300,000 of circuit breaker versus 375. That's 75,000 difference you have to incorporate into, to this number. It's a little complicated. And then we just have an estimated sort of box down there of all the components of the transportation cost. Any questions on out-of-district? Okay. So with that, before we go on to the capital budget, we'll pause here if there's any questions on the operating budget and then we'll ask for you guys to take a vote to approve version 1.0 of the operating budget.
Any questions? Okay. We have a motion to approve the operating budget, version 1.0?
May I? So moved.
You have a second?
Nathaniel Jackson.
Any further discussion? I think Becca is not there anymore. Okay. All in favor? Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you. And so as you spend more time with your budget book, like I said, feel free to send any questions if you need additional information. And then we will have, be sharing additional information with you in February on some of these increases to give you more of details and also reflect anything else that happens between now and February. So the last piece of your budget book is actually our capital request. And it is broken out to be capital request for fiscal year 26 and then an outlook of the next five years. And that's for planning purposes for the town. You will see we're a little light on future projects, mainly because one, it's, it's actually a very quiet period on our onsite insight report for these particular five years. But also, as you know, we did a building assessment, report or audit last year, and I think we're still digesting that information and working with the town with our little building task force to decide next steps for Pine Hill. So given that you're, we're going to sort of pause really large capital items. So the one large item that is on onsite insight report for right now is, is actually the roof covering. We have absolutely no issues with the roof covering and we did do an extensive assessment of that in fiscal year 21. We actually did all of our schools at the same time and there were no issues sided with the Pine Hill. There were no leaks, no, there are no moisture issues. So at this point in time, we will continue to kick that out from year to year. So that's really one of the main things that you see out in the out-years. There are a few other little things. We have a Kubota tractor at Pine Hill that will, you know, is on our radar. The town's capital threshold is 25,000, so that's why you're seeing these items for 25,000. And we have just onsite insights carrying just a grouping of boiler-related projects, but not out until like 2030. So we're not disregarding any projects. If they were on onsite insight, we would have them here, but it's a really low capital five-year stretch that we have right now. So that, that's a good thing. We're not really deferring anything that's going to cause any irreparable damage or issues with the current building. So the one thing that we are bringing forward tonight that's new to the five-year, six-year plan are three lower classrooms in the library that with the continued humidity that we have been encountering, they're actually tiles are popping a little and the adhesive is compromised because of the humidity. And so we do want to replace those three classrooms and we have a state quote from a contractor that we've been using for our floors that would do that at a price of $30,000. And so that is the one item that we're bringing forward for your approval tonight that we will submit to the town's capital committee for a fiscal year 26 capital project.
Those are the, the 4-3 classrooms?
Yeah, the lower. Yep.
Sorry. Tiles in the ceiling or tiles on the floor?
Floor. File, yeah, floor. Sorry.
It's okay.
Yep. And I think that you have, I, yeah, like I said, we have a quote based on a state contract to do those three with the LBT. And again, the beauty of that is we are getting rid of the VCT tiles that require the stripping and waxing. So they're better for the environment, but also less labor for our custodians during the summer. So we are close to getting Pine Hill 100% non-VCT tiles, but at this point, we're only replacing them as we need to. And all the other areas are intact. It's just the humidity and that one lower level because they are starting to pop. We tried to glue more of them down this summer, but it's just you can't, you can't go back. So we would like to replace those.
Is that happening this summer or earlier?
It's been, well, I think it's one of the things builds and builds and builds.
I mean, sorry, when is the replacement happening?
It will happen this summer.
Okay.
Yeah. If it's approved, it'll happen this summer.
Questions on capital?
No? Okay. Um, may I have a motion to approve the capital budget?
I'm sorry, may I just go back? The boiler, replace, not replacement, but boiler projects, related projects? How old is the boiler currently and when do we see it come to the end of its service?
Boilers actually, we've learned have a longer useful life than, than onsite insight. So with, with proper preventative maintenance, you can replace pieces of it without having to replace the whole thing. I don't have in my, in my memory right now the exact age of Sherburne's boiler, but we actually have annual preventative maintenance contractors that come out, check it annually, do whatever minor repairs to keep it operational. So we, we are, the little bit of the money that we invest in our annual maintenance contracts buys us extended life on a lot of our mechanical pieces. So, you know, one line item you have in here is the building maintenance contracted services. Those are all of our annual contracts. And the other line item you'll see is the building maintenance reserve. Those are for repairs, needed repairs. But we do invest heavily in our preventative maintenance to get every useful second out of all of our piece of equipment and we do that across all four schools.
Do we have any vision on any ways to make it more efficient though also?
So we did in all three locations, install a new energy management system that is supposed to provide that for us. It's actually taking, you know, it's, it's, you set set points and it's coming on and going off when it needs to versus just running all the time. So that was one big improvement that we did in all three Pine Hills was just last year, their EMS system. So it, it tracks data for us, but it also allows us to have, when things are shut off, we do holidays, it's, but it's all, it's all, you know, electronically handled, so it's not someone having to do it. There's schedules and programs built into that. So and then Pine Hill is through the sustainability group in, in town, I think a lot of our lights are LED. Those were all swapped, swapped out through some of those initiatives. So those are the things that we try to do that can make a difference. But the EMS system was something that we invested in to sort of more effectively run our, our HVAC equipment.
Last question, I promise.
No, I'd like to.
How's our boiler currently powered? Is it powered by fuel oil? Is it powered by electricity?
We are gas.
You're gas. Gotcha. Natural gas?
Depends on what school. Yes. Natural gas.
With that, is that purchased from another town or do we actually maintain a tank?
No. So we, we purchased from like, so we have a gas contract with the region and Pine Hill together. So we have, it's from an outside supplier, but ever-source.
Yep.
But it's through ever-source, but we contract for our supply.
Gotcha.
And then ever-source delivers, even though they probably deliver and it's just what you're paying, right?
Yep.
But we do do long-term contracts and Pine Hill comes and gets bundled with the gas that we use here at the region.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Just as we do electricity, we do all four schools, the electrical, electricity contract. So by pooling, you can get a better, a better price because we have more kilowatts or thermes that we're using. In fact, the library in Sherburne is part of our gas contract as well. Happy to all have good questions.
Okay. Um, we have a motion to approve the capital budget?
May I could yell it so moved?
You have a second?
Nathaniel Jackson.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor? Motion carries or yeah?
Yep. Thank you. I will submit both these budgets to the Thomas Sherburne this week.
Next, we have informational items. So in your packets, you will find minutes from the September Dover School Committee meeting and the October Regional School Committee meeting. And our next meeting is on February 4th, 2025. If there's anything anyone wishes to add to the agenda, is there anything anyone wishes to add to the agenda now? And you're also welcome to contact Christine before then if anything comes up.
The, the one question I had, and I don't, it doesn't have to be February, but it'd be great to get an update from Brandon just about how parent square and all of that is going and if there's new feedback. It's, it's been a few months, so that'd be great, February 4th.
Yeah, and that was one of, so in yours, the strategies about communication and in all of your fiscal year 25 and 26 numbers is the cost of parent square. So those are one of the few things, those are one of the items too that we were going to highlight.
In February.
In February. Yeah. The things that we have built into the budget that are related to the strategy and the school improvement plan was communications, right? So that's how we're supporting. Yeah.
Can you just back up to number seven? If there's any changes to the?
Oh, oh, sorry. Yes. Um, yes. Um, sorry. Next on the agenda were the consent items. Tonight we'll be approving minutes from our October 15th meeting. Are there any edits or changes?
No.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
May I could yell it so moved?
You have a second?
Nathaniel Jackson.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries? Okay. I did informational items. So our meeting has come to an end. It is now 7:57 PM. May I have a motion to adjourn?
May I could yell it so moved?
Second? All in favor? Thank you.